For January 26, 2021. Tonight, we have two table items on the agenda and three scheduled matters. We have proof of publication in Webster-Harrell for all those items. Before we get started, let's all stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America. Integrité collective for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can you call out Catherine?
Mr. Barrow.
Here.
Mrs. Waller.
Here.
Mr. DiMarco.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Oh, he's here.
Mr. Houser.
Here.
Mr. Artuso.
Okay, the first table matter is 410 Whiting Road. Why don't you read that into the record again, Corinne?
Okay.
So we can get a fresh start on it.
410 Whiting Road. Located at 410 Whiting Road, applicant Ron Broccolo is requesting area variances to allow A, an average lot width of 217.67 feet for Lot 1 where 250 feet is required, and B, an average lot width of 204.55 feet for Lot 2 where 250 feet is required, associated with the creation of a proposed 3.0 acre flag lot by subdividing an existing 6.85 acre parcel having SBL number 049.03-1-33.1 located in an LL Large Lot zoning district under Section 225-12 of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Now, before we get started, we only have four members of the board here. You have a right to be heard before a full board. Now, Mr. Snyder has recused himself because I believe it's because he's a neighboring property.
Yes, he is.
So do you want to proceed?
Yeah, we want to continue.
Okay. So go ahead and start your presentation.
Al LaRue, McMahon LaRue Associates. The DeFrancos are here. They're the present owners of the property being subdivided. And the Broccolos are here to address any of your concerns you might have. I think the request we're asking for is very consistent with what's occurred in the neighborhood. And we've addressed all the comments to the best of my knowledge. And we'll answer any questions you might have.
Okay, now, we asked you to come up with the average widths. And that you have done. Now, I have to thank Josh and Catherine for the homework that they did. They actually got us maps to properties to the north that were granted variances. Had to be what, a year or two years ago, correct? So we do have those maps. I... We received a letter from Mr. Snyder, which was read into the record last meeting. And I don't think we had any other... Josh, do we have any other comments that came in online or otherwise? None, okay. I... You know, this board tends to use its past decisions as kind of a guidepost. It's not the one and only criteria that we use. But it helps us maintain some consistency with our decisions. And being provided with the maps of what was approved was helpful to me. Because honestly, I don't remember exactly what the dimensions were on something we decided two years ago. And I'm just looking at the maps and the other lots, you know, their average widths are about 200 feet, the ones that we had previously approved. Now, they were three acres. As a matter of fact, Gerber Homes was the applicant on that. And he went and acquired 0.5 acres from a neighboring property to meet the three acre requirement. Am I remembering all this correctly?
Yeah, this is the neighboring property you acquired.
That's correct. That's correct, yeah. I don't think the... Well, let me get the map up. Excuse me one second. One of the things I want to point out that's ironic about this whole thing. The spirit of three acre lots is they have spacing between the houses and so on and so forth. It's area that's not serviced by sewers, large lot zoning. Interestingly, the code allows 15-foot side setbacks. You know, the three acre lots.
Yeah.
So which is kind of ironic because our one is, you know, 20 feet.
Yeah, you could have houses 30 feet.
Originally, it was 20 feet.
And they reduced to 15 feet for some reason, yeah.
Well, the Whiting Road... Whiting Road originally was not large lot.
Yep.
And it was changed sometime after 1992. And so I had actually had Josh and Catherine pull the tax map of the properties on Whiting Road. Because most of the lots on Whiting were subdivided before a large lot existed on Whiting Road. So you had a collection of large lots, but they may not have necessarily met the lot width criteria. So just to get some background of...
No, no, I understand. And actually, you're a resident of Whiting Road as well, so you're more familiar with that neighborhood.
Right, right.
Than I am, for instance. But the lots proposed are three acres and 3.877 acres. So it meets the minimum footage requirements, size requirements. Frankly, I don't see any difference between what they're proposing and the ones we approved to the north. As a matter of fact, this lot's a little bit wider than some of those.
They are.
So my opinion is this is in the spirit of the zoning and type of neighborhood. I don't think it's out of character. Now, it doesn't meet the zoning requirements strictly, but then again, a lot of them don't. And, you know, one of the criteria we use is, is it out of character with the neighborhood? It's not. It's not out of character. As a matter of fact, it would be difficult to deprive somebody of variance that we gave somebody right next door. Now, there's only three of us here, so it's not going to be a very robust discussion. But, you know, what are your thoughts?
Well, one of the questions we asked of the applicant, and I don't know that we got an answer. In trying to minimize the impact of the variance, we had asked to look at the... Taking that 10-foot slot and including that in Lot 2, which would improve upon the width of Lot 2. When we looked at the Gerber NAP subdivision, they had to acquire additional property in order to do the subdivision in the substandard sized lots from a width wise that was required. When the rental subdivision came before the board, we would not let them do the subdivision that they wanted because they could not acquire sufficient property in order to do the subdivision that they wanted. We were always looking to minimize the variance by whatever means makes most sense. I know that the owners of Lot 1 would like to have access continued to Webster Park, which then takes that 10 feet off of Lot 2. We ran into a similar situation with the previous subdivision and the... I'm going to say the, what was Lot 1 of the Gerber NAP subdivision. There's actually a 10-foot right-of-way for Lot 1 to access Webster Park, but it is actually part of... I don't even know what lot number it was of that subdivision, the rear lot. So it'd be the northeasternmost lot of that subdivision. There's a legal... I don't know if it's called a right-of-way or tiny little print, bad eyes. There's a legal walking easement for Lot 1, but it's actually part of the rear lot to maximize the lot width with the available property. And I think that was one of the things that the board had asked you to consider because while we're trying to grant the variance to help both parties, again, we're trying to get as close to what the code is requiring as we can, knowing we'll never get to the 250 feet because there is no additional property available.
Right.
That is available, that spot, that 10-foot width.
We've had a lot of experience with easements, walking easements to Lake Ontario, to other town parks. And there's nothing like ownership to... You know, an easement can be restricted, can be restricted illegally. And the only recourse is to go to court and incur huge legal fees, et cetera, et cetera. So the DeFrancos really think it's important to have that connection for the value of their property. And we said, "You really ought to just own it. That way, nobody can restrict it. You own it, and there's never any issue with that." So even with that 10 feet, we exceed the variances that were granted to the north. We exceed the width of the grant, the variances to the north. We have one here that was 154 feet, 151.4 feet.
It's 154.
Yeah.
The owner next door to our neighbors on this block.
Now, that 10 feet, if you get this variance, what's going to be done with that 10 foot? Is it going to be a road? Is it going to be a driveway? Is it...
The owners...
DeFrancos?
...of the property right now will...
I mean, it almost can't be a driveway because you have to have five feet to lot line.
...be a walking path.
A walking path.
...won't be restricted by anybody in the lot.
Yeah. Technically, there's no room for a driveway because if you come in five feet from both lot lines, that's 10 feet.
And it's not even a billable...
One of the... I don't know, maybe I'm thinking too much into this. One of the advantages of that 10-foot walkway, now that side setback becomes 25 feet. Because they've got to be another 15 feet from that, minimal.
Right.
In other words, from the property owner to the south, they've got the 10-foot... Consider the walkway a buffer. It's a strip lane. Now, they've got to be another 15 feet. That makes them 25 feet minimal to that lot line. So that natural walkway space actually may work as an advantage rather than a disadvantage to that degree. Because technically, if they want... I mean, if I own the property to the south, I'd want that house right in the middle of that lot to keep it as far away from me for privacy as possible.
Right, right.
That walkway just pushes the house to the north 10 more feet, at least. They may put it in the middle of the lot anyways. What do you think, Don?
Well, that's certainly positive. I mean, I would agree with the property owner. If you want to patrol it, you buy it.
Right.
You own it. Easements are nice, but occasionally, they can be a problem. They can be an issue.
One of the things that concerns me and what comes to mind are the properties on Lake Road where they put the driveway right up to the property line illegally. I would say if we grant this variance, that 10-foot strip remains natural.
Oh, yeah.
No structures.
Nothing.
No blacktop, no... In other words, it's strictly a walk death, period.
Can we condition it then?
Well, that's what I was considering. Because things get biased, you know, unfortunately, even though we try and think of everything. And those driveways on Lake Road where they put them right up to the lot line, we didn't anticipate that. So we didn't make any such conditions. I wouldn't make that a condition.
And then the other question we had that you may have answered, and I guess I just don't remember. It's been a few weeks since we met, is the flag... The width of the flag is almost 45 feet. I don't know that you answered, and maybe it's just that I'm not remembering. Why the significant width of that? You know, you need five feet on either side setback for the driveway, and then, you know, even a...
It provides additional...
Excuse me, can you use the mic? Thank you.
It provides additional buffer on our lot to the lot that the DeFrancos would own, for instance.
Is there... I don't have topography on this particular map. Is that driveway going to be in the center of that? I don't know what the design looks like, or hasn't that been decided?
There's no house planned. There's no building planned for that particular lot. Our intention is it remains natural, but with the intention that it could be a building on it.
Are you saying you don't think it should be 45 feet wide?
Well, if it's not as wide, then the DeFranco property line could move further to the north. And then, at least, it would minimize the width variance required for Lot 1. Their house is already biased to the south of the lot, and obviously, you're not going to build another house on a lot that has a lot. So it just seemed, you know, in trying to minimize the amount of relief sought from the code, those were just two things that jumped out at me that typically... There's a lot of flag lots on Whiting Road. I don't believe any of the other flags have a flagpole as wide as that.
Yes, they do. The two lots that are currently, the Gerber lots, have a 45 and a 55.
But there's three driveways on that, aren't there?
No, there's one shared driveway. It zigzags along to three, or the two flags, basically. It's in the two flags.
Okay, yeah, there's one driveway, but they both own property to the street.
Yeah, and I think what's helpful with this is it gives the person that's going to put a driveway in there enough flexibility along with RGV and everything else. We've got five feet to the property line, and a 20-foot wide driveway, you're already at 30. So it's really not overly big when you talk about RGV and water, which will be separated. There's a creek down there crossing. So it's going to be challenging, to say the least, and it's not overly big.
Yeah, I don't... Actually, if we reduce the average width of one, we increase the average width of the other. In other words, if you push that flag over, it's going to increase the one lot, but then the way it's measured, it decreases the other, so there's no net gain. I guess...
The other thing was is the 47 and 1/2 feet was chosen so that it was a 250-foot front width of the remaining lot. So, you know, the Whiting Road.
Yeah, if they... I actually like the wider because they'll be further away from both lot lines. I know what they'll typically do is put the water main, a water line on one side, gas electric on the other side, driveway in the center. Then you probably... Like I said, I don't see swells, but they probably have swells alongside the driveway and so on as well. So it gives them room to do that without going on neighboring properties.
Exactly, yeah. It's not a flat piece of land at 45 feet.
Yeah, in other words, typically, you want to swell along the driveway on both sides.
Right.
So it won't drain onto the properties.
Right.
That's going to take up seven or eight feet on each side anyways.
Well, it's not level. That lot's not level anyway.
Yep, there's up and down. Yeah. Okay. This meeting's open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application, our number is 872-7011. If you call in. Do you have any other thoughts, Don?
I mean...
Can I say something?
Of course. Could you step up the microphone? Could you step up to the mic, please? The reason we need to do that is because Catherine transcribes these from the recordings, and if you sit there, she can't hear.
I'm still transferring.
Except I'm too short.
Yeah.
Freaking every minute as I get older. The only thing I have to say really is that the whole purpose, and you probably heard this at the last meeting, the whole purpose is...
Excuse... I'm sorry, I don't mean to... Let me get this.
Okay.
And I'll come back to you because they're... You're here, right? I missed...
The whole purpose, how this whole thing started, was the Broccolos approached me one day over in the Preserve, Whiting Road Preserve, because they were looking for a buffer. They don't want anything built there. But because of town code, you have to make it into a buildable lot, not just sell three acres for a buffer. They are interested in keeping it natural. We've been approached several times over the years. Well, I don't say we, I... We have... I have a friend who's a Realtor. Good three or four times a year, I get an email or I see her somewhere, "When are you going to sell that three acres? When are you going to sell that three acres?" And it was always meant for, so she could sell it for development. I've always had... I had a couple other people who were interested just because they wanted, they wanted. They didn't give them any particular reason. And we always said, "No, we want it wild. We like living where we live. We don't want to sell it." But when they approached us, we thought this is the perfect solution. They want it for a buffer. So anybody whose concern is that it's going to be congested and, you know, all that, I know you have to go by all the legal ramifications, but by the same token, the whole purpose of this whole enterprise is to have it remain natural. And we're not young, so I don't know how much longer we'll be there. I would much prefer to be able to sell it to the next people to say, "Your neighbor's here, wants this and are purchasing it, to be what? So that you will still have that nice woods in your backyard."
Thank you.
That's it?
Whoever called in, call back. I just have to... My opinion is, and I'm one member of the board, it's very much in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. It's a beautiful neighborhood. I don't think this is going to be any detriment, frankly. I'm not sure they're going to call back. I'll give a couple more minutes while we're waiting. Let's see. Pursuant to NYCR, Section 17 of environmental code, I make a motion for a Type 2 seager. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, I'll close the public portion of the meeting. I'll bring it back to the board. Any other ideas or discussion that... Anything come to mind, Don?
I don't have any other questions.
Yeah. I'll tell you about Whiting Road.
Mr. Barrow?
Go ahead, John.
I just wanted to make sure that, I know in your initial comments, you provided the applicant an opportunity to have the application on another night where there's full board. I just wanted to add to that to make sure that the applicant understands that the vote tonight will need to be unanimous.
Did you hear our counsel? You'll need all three of our votes to pass this. Did you want to proceed? He understands, John. Thank you.
Okay, good.
I forgot he was there. That's kind of cool. He's watching. All right. In the absence of any other discussion, I'd like to make a motion to grant an area variance located at 410 Whiting Road. Applicant Ron Broccolo is requesting area variance to allow an average lot width of 217.67 for Lot 1 where 250 is required, and an average lot width of 204.55 for Lot 2 where 250 feet is required, associated with the creation of a proposed 3.0 acre flag lot by subdividing an existing 6.85 acre parcel having SBL number 049.03-1-33.1 located in an LL Large Lot zoning district under Section 225-12 of the Code of the Town of Webster, with the condition that the access to Webster Park, that 10-foot wide walkpath is not developed at all. All right? It's just a walkpath, and that's all it's going to be. Okay? Anything else you'd add to that motion?
It was meant to be left natural.
Correct.
No modifications.
No modification to that access at all.
Because my concern is somebody getting ATV and being able to run up and down that 10-foot strip.
Yes.
And that's a concern I would have, as long as it's left natural.
Do you understand?
Yeah.
Okay, that's going to be a condition of the variance, so you have to adhere to that. We're trying to...
Mr. Barrow, with respect to the limitation, do you want to make that subject to application to the ZVA, or you just want to leave that implied, if you will?
Well, the other option is to... I want to speak very...
No, what?
Is to establish an easement on that 10-foot strip.
Conservation easement?
Some sort of conservation easement.
So that strip is to...
Protected.
Yeah. Yeah, if it's overgrown and it's got growth and so on and so forth, it's going to impede any, like you said, ATVs or dirt bikes or that sort of thing going up and down that sideline.
But there's really no teeth in the applicant agreeing, saying yes. The property's going to change hands. But if there's a written easement for the 10-foot strip, I think it's helpful.
Can we do that, Alf? Can indicate it on the filed map? Conservation easement, okay. Not to be disturbed. Is that adequate, John? Mr. DiMarco? Oh, did we...
Yeah, I know, I think that's much more clear.
Okay, let's do that.
No stipulate that. It's a walking easement only.
Not only that. Once this property, someday when this property changes hands, it has to be on the map, on the filed map.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Barrow.
Aye.
Mr. Houser.
Aye.
Mrs. Waller.
Aye.
Okay. You have your variance, good luck with your project. You still don't know. You've got to go back to the planning board.
Planning board now, yep.
Okay. All right, very good.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, Corinne, could you read the... Let's go ahead and read that and the next one into the record also, even though it's
All right. 1048 Glen Edith Drive, single-family residence located at 1048 Glen Edith Drive, also known as Sunset Trail. Applicants Mary and Brad Washburn are requesting area variances to allow the following. A, a 5.5-foot north side setback where 10 feet is required. B, a 5.5-feet south side setback where 10 feet is required. C, a 16-foot front setback where 35 feet is required, associated with the construction of a single-family residence on a .24 acre parcel having SBL number 078.18-1-67 located in an MHR medium-high residential district under Section 225-13 of the Code of the Town
What do you want?
I brought these these subjects in case you didn't... I know I submitted...
That's fine.
...in case you need to review them, so...
Can't hurt to have that.
Yeah. I'm going to drop these later to manage that.
I've got it, thanks.
Sure.
Yes. Good evening. If you could, you know, introduce yourself for the record and then you could tell us about your project.
Okay, my name is Fred Washburn. This is my wife, Mary Washburn. We're here regarding ten forty eight Glen Edith. I've requested three variances. I appeared in the December meeting, or I didn't appear in the December meeting. The, and to say, I just wanted to apologize to the board to start. I had lost my job in March because of COVID and I just started a new job, so I had to be in Boston and I should have been here. I know it was a difficult meeting. My wife had lost her brother two days before. My architect couldn't appear. My engineer wasn't aware of the variations that we had discussed with my architect and I was on about a thirty second delay, so I know hearing me over the phone was absolutely ridiculous, so I do apologize for that. I'm here, we're building a twenty three hundred thirty square foot house, one bedroom, one and a half bath with a finished block out basement. I've asked for three variances. I think during the last meeting, we got to a conclusion where the north side setback was accepted. It was point three inches more than what's existing. The front side setback was point zero two inches more than what was existing and the, most of the conversation centered around the south side setback. At that point, we had tabled it. It was December twelfth meeting. So I don't know if you've had a chance to skim the notes that I sent and the drawings. I guess what I'd like to do is first find out if there's been any correspondence or anything that came in that I need to address during the meeting and then I don't know if you want to focus in on your specific questions or I can take you through the questions that you asked last meeting and go through those, however you'd like to do it.
You haven't made any change in the plans from the last meeting? Everything's just the way it was?
No, I think I needed to come here and explain because it, I, I need to explain why I'm asking for the south side variance.
Okay. We did get, we did get several letters from neighbors in support of your application. I think we probably had five or six different letters from various neighbors. And I don't, do we need, do we need to read all those, John? Or should we read all those letters?
I guess, how many, how many letters were there, Josh?
About nine or ten.
Corinne, you saw, you saw.
Mr. Bora, what you might want to do is just have the, the party stipulate that the part of the records, Josh, could just give the date and the person indicating who wrote the letter and the date and then you can put some in the bill or we could just enumerate those and then move on from there.
Okay. Yeah, you have, you have the letters handy? Maybe as John stipulate, who wrote the letter, favor, unfavorable, the date of the letter and so on, and their, and their address.
And the address, yeah.
Where, I'm sorry.
Okay. The first one being Kathy Bello, living at ten forty four Sunset Trail, is a letter of support that was received on January twentieth, twenty twenty one. The second one is from Mr. James Cristo at ten eighty two Glen Edith Drive, also a letter of support that was received on January fourth, twenty twenty one. We have a letter from Mr. Mike Julian at ten sixty, let's see, he's at ten sixty, he doesn't have his address here, but it's ten sixty, ten sixty Glen Edith Drive, and it's also a letter of support that was received on December thirty first of twenty twenty. Next one is from Louise McGee at ten ninety Glen Edith Drive. This is also a letter of support that was received on January first, twenty twenty I have another letter of support from Janet and George Wolfe at ten seventy Glen Edith Drive that was received on January second, twenty twenty one. I have a letter of support from Barbara Miller at ten sixty four Glen Edith Drive, letter of support received on January first, twenty twenty one. I have another letter of support from Mr. Tom Wolfe. I do not have his address. Oh, there it is. He's ten ninety six and ten ninety four Glen Edith Drive, letter of support received on January sixteenth, twenty twenty one. Another letter of support from Joanne Perator. She's at ten sixty eight Glen Edith Drive and it was received on Wednesday, January sixth, twenty twenty one. All right. One final letter of support from Thomasina Cavallaro at ten forty six Sunset Trail, received January fifth, twenty twenty one. Those are all.
Thank you. No letters opposed?
No.
All in favor?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So is, so we haven't received any, anything verbally or any, anything else that I need to address?
No, not from the public.
Okay. So, so the main, I think the main question centered around the house, house width. I think quite a few people had questions about why I needed the variance and, and what I'm asking for is a five point five foot setback where ten foot is required, so I'm asking for a four and a half foot variance. In the, in the paper that I did send you, on page four, I go through the house width in some detail. I have been through five iterations with my architect to try and position the house on the property. I'm not trying to make a mansion. It's, you know, under twenty four hundred square feet and what, so I'm not trying to grow the house as big as I can. I have a particular reason for requiring the, the setback as it's mentioned. We went through quite a few iterations. One was where we put the steps in the front. I've included that first drawing. I think it's the page twenty seven in the document that I sent you. Josh, I don't know if you could bring that up? So we originally had the steps in the front, which allowed us for a, a smaller width house. It was a doghouse for the steps going up to the second floor and down to the basement.
Now, the, the front, you're referring to waterside or landside?
Yeah, this is bayside.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
People out of watering.
I understand, yeah. Okay, this is the, this is the inside and north and south, and this is what I'm asking to set down. I also brought a drawing. We actually played a lot with garage spacing. I originally had the garage over here, but because of the way my southern neighbor, the road goes from about fifteen feet down to about twelve feet, there's a big tree there.
Mr. Wa, could you take the microphone with you, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Can you hear?
Okay. So on this side, one of, one of the other earlier iterations that we had, the garage was on this side, so we played with it quite a bit and arrived at the final drawing that, that I'm submitting for variance. If you could go down one page, Josh? Up one page, I'm sorry. I'm just going to explain, keep going a little bit more. Keep going. There, stop right there. So I wanted to give you an overview of the construction and I think Corinne, Ms. Follow had a question and it looks like a four story house. Okay? And so what I tried to do here is pictorially show you what we're doing. This is the house right here, bedroom level with a den. This level down is the main floor. It's about eleven hundred square feet, taking out the area for the stairs, it comes in at about seven hundred square feet, and I'll, I'll go through that in more detail. We stepped this down because of the train, obviously, in this property, if you've ever been there, it's very, very difficult to deal with. It's, it's maddening and so you really, to, to have a proper house built, we really struggled with, with trying to get something done here. So we, we, we made the basement smaller and so you could consider, this is below grade. We also had to worry about grade planes, so positioning east, west was very important because if I didn't address the grade plane, I would have to install sprinklers at, at the cost of twenty five thousand or more. So when I did this, this was probably about the third or fourth iteration and that was positioning the house east, west. The other thing that we wanted to do is retaining wall and my north side neighbors is, is falling down, so I have to fix that. It's cracked, it's, it's partly poured cement, it's also two feet on my side of, of the property in the, in the north, I'm sorry, in the eastmost side. We're not dealing with that. We're just going to take away the block structure that's falling down. So what I also had to do is make sure that from there I could get some steps on the north side that weren't too steep to get down to the water level. This story, which I, I think Ms. Follow questioned, you know, it looks like a four story, but it's not a four story. I had a couple of options, so early on in the project, what I did is look at whether I should build a retaining wall up, and I can show you an example of that. It's in the paper. My, my neighbor two, two to the north, Ms. Bello, has a massive stone retaining wall. I'll show you in one of the pictures and you can do that and I could have eliminated this one. My neighbor right next to me, Thomasina, she actually built her house one level down, so she has to walk down a set of stairs to get to her first level. And I know that was a big problem because she had a partner that in two thousand nine came, she came before the board and she was going to put in an elevator and there were some issues with decks and things like that. And I didn't want to do that because this is my retirement house. We've owned the property since two thousand twelve, been living in Webster since nineteen ninety, and we want to retire here. So this is a retirement house. We want to drive into a garage, get off on the first floor and, and have most of our living space available on that first floor. So what we decided to do was add this, what we call a storage level, and again, it's, it's tiered with the, the dirt because we have to build a way, we have to build a foundation for the house to sit on. So it was option three. First option was retaining wall, second option was building the house down, the third option was just building this, this basically foundation. And it also afforded storage for the water because as you know, this lot is fifty feet wide, it's not really to code now, you've got eighty foot wide lots required by the town of Webster. And so we thought, well, we'll build this, it's unheated, it's block, we're going to be able to put our summer furniture there, we're going to be able to store things there from our boat, our jet skis and that kind of stuff. So now getting to the width, and I apologize for being long-winded about this. So retirement house, what we definitely wanted, we have friends, actually a friend that had MS drove his wheelchair down and he said, when you finish this, you've got to put a freaking elevator in this house so I can get down to the water. I may need one, you never know in my old age, but basically what the elevator that we decided to put in has to be at, able to connect these floors. So when I talk to you about width, that elevator in the house is fixed and it is to go from top to bottom. Okay? So I'm going to refer you. Any questions so far?
No, we're good.
I'm going to refer you to page six. Page six, I'm going to, I'm going to give you this. This is my south side, north side, roadside, bayside. Okay? Garage, as I think Barry noted last time, the garage, the garage is almost substandard. It's our only storage from the road. The, this portion, again, the reason I talked about the elevator, the elevator position is fixed. Okay? So now I've got the garage width, the elevator width, a wall, another wall, a foyer, which is the area in play, and the stairs. So we, we moved the stairs inside the house because I wanted to reduce the square footage of the house. Again, I didn't, you know, we had one set of drawings that the, when we moved it outside, the house was over three thousand square feet. I don't want that. It's a one bedroom house, one and a half bath. I don't want a massive house. I'm moving from a thirty six hundred square foot house. Now, this is awesome play and I stopped working with the architect. We were working on Rev six. We were looking at the stairs option here. The way it's drawn, it leaves a seven and a half foot foyer, seven and a half foot wide. But that's with a ten, ten inch step and a eight inch rise. Again, retirement reasons, I really want to go to a twelve inch step and a six inch rise, which is going to extend the steps out into the foyer, taking off about eight and a half to two feet and also into the main living area. So this is what I would consider the best case from your standpoint, the worst case from my standpoint. My foyer is actually going to get, come down to about six feet. The other thing that I, you know, purely from aesthetics, you know, having a long hallway to very open area is not, not very pleasing, so I, I don't want to do that. You could say that's somewhat self-created, but again, it's mainly the stairs that I'm trying to deal with. So I'm trying to go to a, an open stair, twelve inch step, six inch rise.
So you're saying the stairs are driving the width of the house? Is that?
The stairs here and the foyer, so these are really fixed? So the stairs and the foyer.
Now, i- if the stairs were able to get narrower, just suppose, then what would you do, take it out of the great room or kitchen also?
Okay, let me see if I, I understand.
In other words, you're saying you need that much room for the run of the stairs with ten inch trucks? So if, I, I, I'm thinking like I think, if the stairs were narrower, where would you? If the stairs were narrower, where would you take the space from? Say you were able to make the house a foot narrower, for instance. Would it come out of the kitchen or great room?
No, it would come out of the foyer. I'd have to...
Yeah, but if the stairs are narrower, the rest of that wall has to get narrower too. All the way to the back. See where the fireplace is?
Here.
If there was a way to build those stairs narrower, where would the other space come out?
Oh, it would definitely come, because it's going, because if we go to a twelve-six pitch, the stairs are already gonna impede on the great gathering room here. So, keep in mind, this area is about six hundred ninety-eight square feet for the three major rooms of the house, the kitchen, the dining area, and the gathering room. So, making that, I mean, that's pretty darn small for what's looking to be around an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar house. And keep in mind, you know, I'm, because I'm building on this terrain and I've really found out through going through this process, to build on this type of property, you really get hosed from a cost perspective. You have to invest so much money in just to get the property reasonably well. You know, I'm looking at, right now, the next step is to do a seven-thousand, eight-thousand-dollar shoring study and I had to put seventy-five thousand dollars in the budget just for shore along the north and possibly the south sides. So, those are our costs that, you know, I've actually looked at trying to buy a property down by Mr. Leonardo because I found out that this was so expensive to build on. We love the area. The view is unbelievable. We've got great neighbors. And so, you know, we need, we'd really like to invest in this property, but I'm trying to reel it in a bit. So, and so, if I do, it will, in fact, if you look at the eleven-by-seventeen prints that I gave you on the first floor drawing. What I did is, if you see that dashed red line, so basically, you're looking at, at that, if I go to a twelve-six stair and try not to take more than a foot and a half out of the foyer, the stairs will extend into the gather, into the gathering room where that dashed line is. So, you can see I'm gonna be eating up quite a bit of square footage just from stairs.
Okay, did you consider putting winders on the landings? Did you consider doing winder steps on the landings to eliminate two treads?
Well, we've got two landings. We've got a landing here, landing here, and then obviously here. But keep in mind, this goes up and it goes down. All right? And so, I did a bit of stair design. That's also included in an appendix there. So, you can play around with this. You know, I'd like to. And again, I stopped doing it because of this variance request. But, you know, I want to have some open stairs so that area isn't so enclosed. I don't want your typical carpeted wood stairs.
Well, one of the things I would suggest, you know, obviously, it's your architect. Those landings could be split into two treads. The landing could be split with a winder with a diagonal. Now, you can go with your twelve-ish. Then you go...
You know, I'd like to get up on there, turn. And the other thing that I should say, we have to build this foundation with ICF. And the problem, you know, these look fairly wide, the stairs here, but going down, because the walls get much thicker, we have to build a much thicker foundation. The reason they look wide up here is because down below, the stairs narrow. So, keeping in mind, this is our way to get stuff upstairs and downstairs. You know, we want to have those stairs fairly wide.
So, the stairs in the basement will be a foot narrower than the stairs that we're seeing upstairs?
Exactly. So, that's, you know, again, a design constraint that I wasn't aware of and it's because of the pressure of the soil against the foundation.
The only reason I bring this up is because that side setback seemed to be the only sticking point last meeting, or the major, I shouldn't say the only, the major sticking point. So, the other thing that occurs to me, the fireplace seems to be cantilevered out from the room? Does that have a foundation under it or is that cantilevered out?
It's, right now, it's, we haven't really discussed it. It's, and I'm thinking it's a gas fireplace and it'll probably be cantilevered.
Okay. So, in Webster, they measure to the foundation for setback.
Pardon me?
In the town of Webster, they measure to the foundation, not to the cantilever.
Okay.
But seeing that it's a small side setback, it might be nice to pull the fireplace in. You don't understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yeah, because, yeah, because not only that, then the vent for the gas sticks out like another eight inches. You've got the two feet plus the eight inches. So, now you're getting closer and closer. I'm just, I'm just trying to think what other potential, you know, problems we might run into. Now, other towns, they measure to the cantilever. They don't measure to the foundation. So, every town is a little bit different. But see now, if you're five-point-five and that cantilever's out two feet plus the vent, it's now two and a half feet. So, now you're only three and a half feet off the line.
Right, right. I mean, if that was a stipulation for getting this variance, I would move it inside. You know, I could talk about the neighboring property. I know you really don't want to hear about that. So, you know, I can make a case for why that, you know, I can't remember. I think Eric, Mr. Schneider, asked me if I tried to buy the property and I did. And I re-approached my neighbor and said, "Would you sell it in whole or part?" But she won't. So, because, and I found out the reason, her house is actually built over the property line for that piece of, that slice. I call it the sixty-six property. It's dash sixty-six. Her house is built over it and her deck is eight feet over the property line. So, you know, she owns both properties. Took me a while to figure that out because the deed wasn't in her name. It was in her maiden name and her sister's name and her deceased father's name. So, you know, it's not a property that I don't think would be developed. Leave it at that. I can answer any questions on that.
Well, we're gonna consider yours as-is.
Exactly, exactly. It's, okay. So, again, so I guess, you know, like I said, the stairs of wood are likely going to encroach you and make my foyer more narrow. I don't want to make the stairs more narrow because as they go into the basement, then they get even more narrow. And I think you said it is about a foot more narrow. I don't want to take that much area by extending them into the gathering room. So, I'm going to be playing around with that and doing the best I can to do that trade-off. But that's where I left the discussion with my architect because I said, "Listen, I need to get this variance hammered out because it is an issue."
Does that five-point-five on the side setback, does it leave you any tolerance at all or is that exact?
I, you know, if I could get more, I'd take more, obviously. But, you know, I looked at all the side setbacks and I thought, five and a half feet, especially given that the only thing there right now in the future, in my opinion, is the parking space for my neighbor. She parks, you know, two feet from the property line. It's a gravel parking space. And whether I'm, you know, five and a half, my house is five and a half feet from there or four and a half feet, that's really not going to affect that piece of property. And I guess the other thing is, and more importantly, you know, I'm leaving this area open and I think if you go to the parking diagram, that is page eighteen and it's also included in the eleven-by-seventeen prints.
Yeah, right. Everything in that neighborhood is tight.
It's incredible. I mean, and I understand why it's like that and I didn't, I guess I was pretty naive when I bought the property. You know, I didn't think everything was gonna be this difficult, quite honestly. So, okay. So, what, if you can see here...
Question.
Sure, Mr. Schneider.
The discussion of the width of the foyer, you can't take a foot out of that and out of the great room in order to reduce the impact of the variance?
Say that again, can you repeat it?
You're narrowing the foyer and the gathering room by about a foot, for example.
That's gonna happen already by changing the stair rise and tread. So, I'm already gonna be taking probably three feet out of the gathering room and a foot and a half out of the foyer so I can get the stair pitch that I want, which is the twelve-inch tread with a six-inch rise and at least a two-inch thick tread. So, you know, I looked at that and again, I'm trying to, I don't want to have a carpeted, what you would say, a traditional staircase. I'd like something that is more open so the house doesn't feel so closed in. And as you, if you look at the pictorial, the renderings, we've got some windows there and things to bring in some light and it's just the effect. We don't want what I would call, if you've ever been to Manhattan, I don't want a row house. You know, that feel when you walk in that you're just crunched in, going through a small hallway to a living area. So, you know, that's why I prefer the, you know, slightly wider area.
So, with the change that you're making to the stairs, the actual width of that foyer will only be six feet as opposed to the seven-six right now?
Correct, correct. And the stair design is in the appendix of the document that I sent you. Again, that's right when we broke it off with the architect and I said, you know, this is not gonna, we need to get this settled before I can actually keep working with you because, you know, they're on the clock every minute, so. And just to say one thing about, I know you're concerned about the positioning of the fireplace. That's well down the significant slope of the property and I'll show you a picture of that. Right now, the road is here. My neighbor parks right here. So, we did a parking analysis and tried to figure out, you know, could we move the house more towards the road? And it's really impossible. The other thing, I included a bunch of pictures in the document that showed the snow. The board, back in two thousand nine, granted a variance to my northern neighbor of zero feet, front variance and a four-foot, zero when fifteen feet was required and four feet when thirty-five feet was required for garage. So, the problem is, I'm almost like on a dead end. You can't push snow into anywhere on her property. She's got one parking place plus her garage. And so, you know, she parks in front of the garage and the snowplow just completely covers the front of my house and also my parking area. And I've included pictures of that. So, right now, generally, two of these spots are filled with snow and this is, this front is all filled with snow. So, I tried to make the front of the house here so the plows would have someplace to push the snow. The road narrows to twelve feet here and actually starts to go up. So, there's no other place to push it unless you push it into my neighbor's parking spot. So, the only horizontal area on this piece of property that's right next to me is this parking spot because it pitches significantly to the west and here and to the south. So, it drops off significantly. She basically has nowhere to have snow pushed. Right now, both my neighbors use my parking spots for parking and I've included some pictures of there, but each of them only have one parking, one parking area. So, just to illustrate that, I'll point you to a couple of pictures.
Well, I don't think, I don't think we need, we've all been in the neighborhood. We understand how tight. Then across the street, then across the street, it goes straight up, straight up. So, you know, it's a tight side. The board tries to minimize the size of the variances and I know we've given other variances up and down that street over the years.
Unfortunately, I read every zoning board meeting since two thousand and I did an analysis on the variances that you did give. And I only did side-to-side variances and mine is coming in both in actual absolute number on, in the twenty percent range for what you've given. I put two graphs in the document. Also, the actual space between the properties, and I did include Lake Road because it's similar on the bay. The side-to-side distance between two properties or the property and the property line is, mine is, it's much more generous. So, you know, I did do that research. Unfortunately, I couldn't get at the variances that were granted because I know most of these properties are non-conforming. Josh is living in one. He's got a stretch of four houses that you can reach out and touch your neighbors. The Dearness are also, you know, they're actually almost, I think they're probably intersecting. And I think the Julians, they actually, they have much wider lots. I think they've got seventy-five-foot lots, but the houses had to be built very closely because they're not doing that kind of land remediation that I'm doing and had to obviously get a variance to build close together.
When these lots were carved out, probably seventy or eighty years ago and they were cottages, they were adequate. But now people, now that waterfront property is very valuable and we see people wanting to build nice homes on them, which I can't blame you for that.
And I can't understand precedence in, you know, in our area, but I think, you know, if you look at any of the lots that are left, and I'm the last one that's left that's trying to improve. And if you've seen the property, again, I included some pictures in the document, it's terrible. I mean, the erosion is getting really bad. The current retaining wall, the six-by-sixes are almost split in half. You know, something has to be done. It's just, it's just whether I do it or not or leave it to the next person. I think, one more. If you go to twenty-two, I just wanted to read page, or photo twenty-two. Yeah, page twenty-two? Yeah. So, just so you can see what we're dealing with, that's the snow, that's my parking spaces. That's my house. So, yeah, and that's the garage. And again, I've got another photo that I didn't include, but because of the zero variance granted on her retaining wall to the north, she can't have any snow pushed into her property. It all has to go to mine. So, that's a, that's a problem. So, I guess...
So, how are you gonna solve that problem?
Well, that's, if you go back to that, I built my house to leave area to push snow. So, if you look at the parking diagram, where the two... snow, so, so if you look at the parking diagram, um, where the two, uh, that is-
Isn't there a culvert on the south side of your house or your property?
Say that again, Doc.
Isn't there a culvert on the east, south side of your property?
A pipe going down?
Green pipe?
Drain pipe going down?
There is, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that, that'll help with some of the erosion going down on your property.
Well, I've gotta-
When it melts.
I'm not sure if it's, it's, it's working, honestly, and, and that's one of the things, there's three pipes that cross from my neighbor's property onto mine, I think one of them is, uh, it's a clay pipe, the other two are plastic pipe, I'm not, I've, I've gotta have someone when I, I rebuild the retaining wall-
Problem is all that's private and there, and nobody kept any records of it.
No, it's, uh, obviously, and, and the builders took a, a little license when they, you know, built, built, you know, her retaining wall two and a half feet onto my property and, and put the pipes going across my property, so I'm, I'm gonna have to fix that when I, I build a retaining wall, so, uh, I told her about it and, you know, I said I'm gonna take care of it, she's aware of it, and I said we'll deal with, you know, I'll, I'll throw it into the cost of rebuilding the retaining wall, so.
Yeah, definitely you'd want to be able to control that, keep the hydraulic pressure off those foundation walls.
Yeah, I, it's, uh, how close, can you repeat that, the question, or it was just kind of a comment?
You know, it was basically a comment, you'd wanna look into that to control some of the hydraulic pressure on your foundation walls.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we're, we've got, uh, I think, uh, Barry kind of noted, the foundation walls that we're gonna have, yeah, sorry. Yeah, I want dry, I had to deal with a caving uh wall on my new build, um, and I don't wanna ever do that because that's where I'm wear- why I'm wearing a back brace and had three back operations in the last two years, so, um, yeah, we won't be doing that anymore.
This, uh, this meeting's open to the public, anyone wishing to call in, uh, to comment for or against the application, our number's eight-seven-two-seven-zero-one-one. I, uh, I know that side setback was, was the major issue, I didn't, he's dealing with a slope, the front, front setback we're, unfortunately, we're kinda stuck with because he has a sub-basement, a basement, first floor, second floor, because it's, it's a function of the slope, and you have to put your foundation into original ground or you gotta put pilings in or whatever, so, um, I think your positioning of the house towards the street is, from, from that cross-section you illustrated that, that's, that's the reason it needs to be there, and also, uh, basically, uh, you stated that it's a, just a fraction from where the existing structure is, so it's not-
Correct.
It's not really a significant change from what's there.
Correct, it's, uh, I can tell you exactly, it's, um, is, uh, the south side setback, I'm sorry, the front setback, since it is, it's only point zero-two inches different than-
Yeah.
What it is right now, um, so yeah, we've effectively fixed that, uh, to be about the same, I mean, for all intensive purposes, it's identical to what's there, um, the north side setback, uh, it's only, at, we only asked for point-three-three inches, so essentially exactly what's there, I mean, and, point-three-three feet, and the south, again, uh, we're asking for uh four and a half feet variance to give a five-point-five foot distance between my structure and the property line.
Well, after listening to the applicant, the width of the house is pretty much predicated or a function of the width of the garage, the width of the foyer, and the width of the stairway, that's the width of the house. The garage is only, what, sixteen feet wide?
Uh, the garage is, uh, yes.
I believe I saw sixteen, I, I maybe wrong.
Garage is sixteen feet wide, yeah.
So it's a one and a half car garage.
Yes, only storage that we'll have is that garage, or, you know, any storage for bikes or anything else like that, snow blowers, obviously, yeah.
I, I don't think anyone's gonna call in, we got, I think all, all the neighbors responded with letters, uh, all positive, I, I think the neighbors wanna see that site developed.
Well, we get laughed at by people driving their boats by, so, um, it's, it is an eyesore and I think everyone would like to see it developed, so, um, you know, and it's, like I said, we'd like to stay there and retire there, so.
Um, I don't think we're gonna get any calls, so I'll close the public portion of the meeting and bring it back to the board. I know, I, I just, let's go around the, let's go around the horn here and, and see, you, you were pretty volatile about that side setback at the last meeting, if you-
Yeah, and I think we could get a little relief there, it might not be what the applicant wants, but I'm concerned with Article seventy-eights, both from the neighbor to the south and, um, also, uh, there was considerable discussion in the lobby at the last meeting between an applicant on Lake Road and these applicants, so I know that this is being watched and that we're going to, if we don't do our due diligence here, we're going to get hit, um, so. Um, well, I'll, I'll be frank about it, Mr. Kashani was very upset that he didn't get his way, he's going to be watching this application very closely because you're basically asking for what he wasn't given, the only difference there is that you've got a ten-foot side setback to deal with where he had a fifteen-foot to deal with, and he also had objections from the neighbors, um, it seems from page nine of your presentation that you've discussed this with the neighbor at ten-fifty-four, and there doesn't seem to be any issues from that neighbor, if they had written in a letter of, um, you know, approval, this would be pretty much a slam dunk, but without that, there is an obvious possibility that they would end up Article seventy-eight-ing this, or that, um, we have to be very careful in how we word this, otherwise, Mr. Kashani's going to Article seventy-eight us for his sandbar property development, so. Yes.
Could you, could you stand the microphone, please?
My issue is, I'm looking at the Glen Edith property and the road as a whole, that whole little neighborhood, I don't know where his is, I'm not sure, I'm putting, I, I would like you to review our land, our property lot, the housing, the way everybody has placed all their, um, ver- the variances have been placed on that area, we only have one house left to be built on that street in a very confined, uh, difficult piece of land, I'm not concerned about, and I, and maybe this is sounding a bit negative, but look at just ours, then you compare this to his, okay?
Okay, so what you need to understand is what I just said, we have to do due diligence, I didn't say we're not going to grant it.
Just, just, okay, so, okay, okay, so, excuse me one second, uh, counsel didn't hear what was said, I, I just wanted to repeat, so.
All right, Mr. Reynolds, let me, let, let me start with, uh, and again, I, I apologize that I'm remote this evening, but, but who was the woman that was just speaking?
That's Mrs. Washburn.
Okay, that's the-
That's the, the applicant.
The applicant?
Yes.
The, the applicant, okay, very good, and to address Mr. Schneider's comments, did he indicate that there was a conversation that's not on the record and that there's some concern about another applicant on another day?
That's-
And the likely risk of an Article seventy-eight having to do with this application?
That's what was said.
Yes, that's essentially it, Mr. DiMarco.
Okay, well, with, all right, so with all respect to, to Mr. Schneider, uh, that, that is of no moment here, this is a individual application, it should be viewed as such within the requirements of the zoning criteria that we need to abide ourselves by, we strive to be consistent, we strive to be consistent with precedent, but at the end of the day, it, it's an independent application, the likelihood or lack of likelihood that another party is going to commit an Article seventy-eight for a previous denial should not be a factor upon which this matter is decided.
But it does require that we do due diligence and be sure that we've got all the eyes dotted and the t's crossed.
Every, Mr. Schneider, every case requires due diligence.
Right.
But if you wanna talk about another matter and, you know, the, the legal implication of an Article seventy-eight, then we need to go into this executive session, but I, I don't see how that's relevant in this application.
All right, thank, thank you, John, okay, let's, let's get something straight, the Lake Road community is one community, your community is another community, they have different personalities, uh, what we need to do is consider your community, your neighbors, the preferences of your neighbors, all positive, the neighbor to the south who is the one that's going to be affected, had the opportunity to speak up.
Correct.
Apparently, they don't care because they didn't speak up, so-
Correct.
Apparently, they're not concerned, otherwise, they'd write a letter saying, hey, I have a problem with this, all right?
Correct.
They'd given, been given that opportunity, it's been advertised, duly advertised, this is the second meeting, it was tabled, the opportunity's been there, okay?
Correct.
Now, uh, and, and, and as, as counsel states, every application has to be viewed for tone and error.
Independently.
Okay?
Correct.
So-
And I'd like to just submit three pictures into the record, if you, if you'd like, because I understand Lake Road and Glen Edith are considered separately, but it's, from appearances on the bay, it's Webster and, and how we're, we're viewed, um, I agree with you one hundred percent, but I, I did catch some, uh, minutes back in two thousand nine, oh, I'm sorry, uh, where, where you were looking at the appearance of the bay, um, in general, it was regard to boat docks and, and how you wanted Webster to look, and, and that's why I included a lot of the side setback variances, uh, for Lake Road, I did, I've got three pictures I'd like submitted into record, one is, uh, the four houses in Glen Edith by Josh, um, and these are just Google, three from Google Maps, uh, the other is, uh, ten-fifty-eight and ten-sixty, which are, um, you know, right south of me, and then also ten-sixty-two, uh, and ten, uh, well, that's Josh's, I'm sorry, and then also, uh, ten-sixteen and ten-twenty, where the, uh, the houses almost look like they're overlapping, so, I'll just-
Are they in the time?
No, they aren't, I'm sorry, and, and I should've included them, but these three uh photos, if you, if you'd like to just quickly pass them around, I downloaded them from Google Maps, this is the Glen Edith neighborhood that I'm in, and, uh, I've annotated those on the top. And then, one more for the record, um, this is the north, uh, I'm sorry, the, the, um, east side setback that was granted, uh, where fifteen feet is required, zero foot for a retaining wall that, that actually requires everyone to push snow in my property, so, uh, I'm gonna, if you wanna take a look at that too, so, I'm sorry, I didn't have a time to, uh, to get those in the document.
Thank you.
Can we, just going back to the neighbor's comments for and against, um, since Ms. Josh was contacted with respect to the purchase of the property, with a note that you're planning on building a home and you would like to purchase additional land, she said no to the land, but she didn't argue about the property, so can we, can we pers-
Well-
Make the assumption that since she didn't say she's against it, that she's for it?
Well, I, I would kind of, I would make that assumption, yeah, I-
Because we do have her note that says, yeah, I'm not gonna sell it to you, use what you've got, but that next sentence is missing that says, keep it away from my property.
Well, the, the town's required to notify, or the applicant's required to notify, and, and they have the meeting, the date meeting, and we give them an opportunity to call, and they, they have the town website, I, I mean, in the absence of a live audience, I don't know what more we could do.
I, I guarantee my house will improve her property value so much on both her parcels, the one that is just adjacent to me and the one south of that, that she'll spit in nickels, and, um, honestly, if that parcel adjacent to me ever becomes available, I will buy it, there's absolutely no question there, I'd love to have a little more space, I, instead of a fifty-foot lot, I'd like to be able to combine the two lots, or even if she wants to subdivide, she's got already a hundred-foot front edge, um, so, the, her, her big problem is without investing, uh, money in, in moving earth, you know, it's the only parking spot she's got, the only level place is that one corner that's two feet from my property line, you know, so she's got a parking space that's two feet from my parking, uh, property line, I don't care, I mean, that's the only place she has to park, and, you know, am I gonna get upset because, you know, she hasn't applied for a variance, no, you know, nine times out of ten, her daughters park in my, my parking spots, my northern neighbor, she's got four people living there, and they park in my parking spots, and if they're available, I'm gonna let them, it's, that's the, it's the way, you know, you have to live on the lake or on the bay, because there isn't that, that type of, uh, space for people, so.
You know, w- we just deal with setbacks, numbers, how many feet, how many feet, how many, uh, tenths?
I, I-
One thing I hear from people is that's gonna devalue my property, and what you're proposing is going to increase the value of everything around it, because that's, the shed that's there is an eyesore, now, we try and stay within the zoning requirements whenever possible, but on, on those lot, every single one of those houses need variances, every one of them, and, you know-
At one time or the other, yes.
Yep, and, and it's just a matter of the, the degree of variance, and as I said, the neighbor to the south had an opportunity to voice an objection, when you build that house, her value of her property is gonna go up substantially, so maybe that's why she's not objected, maybe, I'm just, I'm just speculating, yes. Now, I, I guess, you know, let's go through the standards and then we could, we could, you know, discuss it further, but-
I have one more question, sure, do you have, do you see as far as any permits?
I will be, I, I've, I've signed the doc, uh, the document, my engineer, who you met last time, Wendy and Ellen, uh, have submitted the, the document, so yeah.
So you haven't received any confirmation?
No, no, and we did that for all the doc and everything else, so we've been through that rodeo, I don't think, uh, that's gonna be a real problem.
Well, the one of the conditions, then?
Well, we would, that's right.
Yeah, all, all, all the, the permits have to be-
Yeah, I sent in the applic- the, I signed the check and sent in the, uh-
Of course.
Uh, wanna go through the standards, you want me to do it?
Go ahead.
Okay, okay, now, we just discussed this earlier about the standards, we, this, New York State has standards that we need to abide by in order to grant a variance.
Correct.
So, standard number one, this request is not out of character with the neighborhood. I say it's not.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, ev- ever- I mean, I mean, as I, I drove down there a couple times.
Okay, good.
Scared the heck out of my wife because I took my truck, and, and, and when you go down a road, it's like a hairpin turn and drops off, and, yeah, but...
Yeah.
She likes to keep me company, which is good. But anyways, it's not, that neighborhood, half the people in this town, half, 90% of the people in this town never went down that road.
No, no.
They don't even know it's there. That neighborhood is a little, just a little hamlet in its, in itself, all right? And we've heard from all the neighbors, I mean, what we're trying to do is keep consistency in neighborhoods, neighborhoods, you know, keep, keep consistent, it adds value to everybody. And we got all positive, you know, positive feedback, it's not out of character with the neighborhood. Uh, some of the variances we granted are a lot closer to the line, like the one next door where it's zero to the front setback. It will not be a detriment created nearby properties. I, for one, would like to see that fireplace pulled in because you're already close to line, because that may be considered a detriment to somebody in the future, but beyond that, you have drainage, you have retaining walls, I don't see any detriment created. Actually, I see that, you know, what you plan to be, uh, benefit to the neighborhood. Uh, benefit is not achievable by any other method. It's possible you could have squeezed the house, but I don't think any of the rooms are extravagant, the foyer is not extravagant, I understand the need for the stairwell the way it is, the elevator, the garage is substandard, in my opinion, so, uh, the request is somewhat substantial because 15 feet, five, five and a half feet, it's a substantial variance.
Um, the, the requirement's ten...
Ten feet.
It's 10 feet.
Excuse me, okay, I'm sorry.
And also, it's also been determined that there's no other land available for purchase, so that's to the previous standard.
So it's, it's still, it's still a fairly substantial variance, even if it's 10 feet, okay? Uh, there are no adverse physical environmental impacts to the site or neighborhood. I don't see any huge impacts. As a matter of fact, you're going to improve the retaining walls on the sides and so on and so forth.
Correct, yep.
Generally improve the, improve the site, okay? Uh, the neighbor directly to the north of you wrote a le, letter of approval, they, they thought it was a great idea. Uh, difficulty is somewhat self-created, you know, in that, you know, you purchased the property anticipating variances, so it is somewhat self-created. And request is not, it's not undesirable change, quite contrary, I think a new home there will add value to that entire neighborhood, um, and the request is not significant. And when I compare it to variances granted to other properties in the area, it's similar to what was granted to other people in the area. Anything to add?
I, I also, I got a comment that the, um, because it helps with the front setback, the, the property itself is bisected by the private drive, so you don't, you don't have use of half of the front of the property to set your house back because...
Actually, Josh and I had this discussion today. I said, is that a public road or a private road? He said it's private.
It's on right of way.
But the definition is the setback is from the road right of way to the front of the house, whether it's public or private.
Right.
Whereas he really owns property on the other side also, so, you know...
But that just makes trying to meet the setbacks that much worse because you've lost...
You've lost some of your property.
You've set that property for the house.
Because it's not typical where the road is at the very front of your property that bisects it.
Exactly.
So, so that makes the front setback even less of an impact.
And, and just to add, I, I have tried to look at doing something with the, uh, property to the east side of, past the road, the east side of the road, but it's, it's just too expensive.
Yeah, that bank goes up.
And it goes, mine, especially mine, um, my land, I don't know whether, I don't know why, I know, uh, Thomasina to the north of me took out a lot of dirt, but, uh, mine is just, uh, it's a mountain, so, uh, I, I can't, I can't do that. It's just, uh, 200,000 just to put in a wall, and then if I wanted to put in a garage or anything, um, you know, I'd be starting there, it's like developing a whole nother property. So, uh, that's why I focused in on, on the house and, and the way I laid it out.
Pursuant six, uh, section 617 of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for type two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Brown, you, you closed the public hearing?
I did.
Yes.
Okay, good.
I did. Yeah, yeah. Uh, thank you. Uh, all right, unless somebody has something to add, I'll, I'll make a motion. Make a motion to grant area variances to 1048 Glen Edith Drive, single-family residence, uh, applicant Mary Ann Fred Washburn, uh, a 5.5-foot north side setback where 10 feet is required, a 5.5-foot south side setback where 10 feet is required, 16-foot front setback where 35 feet is required, associated with the construction of a single-family residence on a .24-acre parcel having S B L number 078.18-1-67, located in an M H R medium-high residential district under section 225-13 of the code of the town of Webster, with the condition that the fireplace on the side is not cantilevered, so there's no, nothing more than that 5.5 feet, or nothing less than the 5.5 feet of the sideline, all right.
Second. Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mrs. Fola?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
Okay, you have your variance.
Well, thank you.
Now, the conditions are, this, this variance is good for one year if you don't do some meaningful construction when you have to go back.
I will be standing here, if it's not done in a year, my wife will kill me.
You'll probably be out there tomorrow with your shovel, but you need to get all necessary variances.
Yes.
Or, excuse me, permits, D E C, town, any other permits that are required.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening. Now, we're onto the scheduled matters. Anybody need a break? Nope? Okay. That's for John.
All right, 227 Bayway Drive Front Porch, located at 227 Bayway Drive, applicant Mary Allen Cota is requesting an area variance to allow a 28-foot front setback where 50 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 10-foot by 8-foot front porch on a .29 acre parcel having S B L number 078.05-1-84, located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 225-11 of the code of the town of Webster.
Karen sanitizing the podium. And Mark, good job. Okay, could you introduce yourself, please, for the record and tell us about your project?
Okay, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, my name's Mary Allen Cota, I'm on Bayway Drive, and what I'm, what do you need to know from me, what I'm gonna do, obviously? My intent is to build a new front porch. The stoop is, is, um, just a small brick platform, and the bricks are all getting loose, and the concrete slab that's in the center top is slanting toward the house, so I'm afraid that the water's going to go down against the foundation, and, uh, I just feel that it's not safe anymore, so I wanted to build a porch on top of that, not even have to take it out, just a porch that is not all that much bigger than what's there right now. Um, what do you need to know besides that?
Is the porch going to be covered or is it just a deck?
Just a deck, just a deck with a rail. I have a picture here, I don't know if you want to put it up on the screen or if you want me to just show it to someone, of the almost exact same porch that I would like to build, and this, this exists on a house that's nine houses away from mine. Not even like to see it, I don't know what to do.
Did you say you have a picture of it?
I do.
Mark, we'll, we'll just pass it around. Thank you.
Well, the, the size of the porch is pretty much predicated by the location of the sidewalk, so it's not excessive.
Do you want this back?
No, it's not. Well, actually, yes, I do.
Okay.
I can lay it back.
Okay, so it's a deck with a railing around it?
Right.
And a couple steps?
Yeah.
Is this in your neighborhood?
Yes. The sidewalk that, that approaches the steps now, that come from the driveway area, it goes along, parallel to the front of the house, and it goes in front of the steps that are there now, so you just step up onto the stoop that's there, and the...
Oh, yeah, I remember this one.
The same sidewalk will line up with the steps, only the steps will be a lot smaller than the steps that are there now, and the sidewalk will, will enter right into it. So it fits nicely to the sidewalk that's already there.
Okay, we, we've seen a couple others come in looking for front porches in that general neighborhood of West Webster.
Yeah, I mean, even when we lived over in that area, the front stoop was, the blocks were already coming loose and everything else, I had to do massive amount of work just to shore that up, so I'm not surprised that this is becoming a trend.
It's a normal deterioration through the years.
Right.
And it's what they did years ago as far as front stoops.
Right. I think the whole street has that.
They're all, they're all 35 feet from the road, they're already close to the road to start with.
Yeah, pretty much.
Very little traffic on those roads too.
None of them are 50 feet setback like the code says they should be.
Yeah, uh, this meeting's open to the public, anybody wishing to speak for or against this application, our number's 872-7011. I think it'd be a nice addition to the house, actually. You gonna sit on that front porch?
I, I, my intention is to do so, but, I don't know if that'll ever happen, how many people do you see sitting on their porch?
It's coming back.
Yeah, the way, the way they used to build those old stoops, there was just enough room to walk up there and ring the bell, that's it.
Yeah, and these fall if you...
Our stoop.
Yeah.
If you open the door, you fall off the steps.
No chair required.
Just sit on the step.
I, I don't think anyone's going to call on this, uh, application, so we'll close, close the public portion of the meeting.
I sent out my letters, I didn't get any feedback back from anybody, so...
Eric, you had, you had an opinion now, that, so do you have an opinion that porch is pretty much...
Well, it's predicated by the location of the sidewalk, just like the photo that, um, was shared, so, uh, you know, it, basically, it's not exceeding that, it's not a large deck on the front of the house or anything like that, it's, you know, and it's necessary because of the deterioration of the concrete.
Yeah, it's not coming forward any more than the sidewalk, basically.
Right, exactly, yeah.
I drove around the Oakwood Bayway block, and there were at least eight similar stoops or decks that replaced the existing deteriorated stoop, um, all roughly the same size, all coming out roughly the same distance. It's, it's the logical, it's, it's the logical fix for the situation that you have right now without spending a huge amount of money to put a new entryway on the front of the house. It, it's definitely in character of the neighborhood as it's turned over.
We actually have an instrument survey with Real Dimension. I know you like that.
Yes, I do.
All right, somebody want to go through the standards?
Sure. Um, essential character, no undesirable change in the neighborhood, um, obviously, safety is a desirable change. This is not out of line with the neighbors as more and more people are doing this in that neighborhood because of the issues with the deterioration over time. No other remedy, um, there's no way to acquire any other land or change the layout of the house in general to accommodate a different move. Um, significance, it's no more significant than the existing sidewalk, um, it's not any more significant than it needs to be, in other words, it's the minimum. Um, physical or environmental conditions, there are none, this is all a big sand neighborhood, there's nothing that's going to run off, just isn't a problem once it hits the ground. Uh, not self-created, uh, not really in this instance, it's just deterioration over time, it's got to be replaced, and this is probably the least expensive way to do it, in fact, so, um, with that said...
Eric, just before you make the motion, let me just do the secret.
Oh, right, yeah.
Pursuant to 617 of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, on to the motion. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, bay, front porch at 227 Bayway Drive, applicant Mary Allen Cota requesting a variance to allow a 28-foot front setback where 50 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 10-by-8 front porch on a .29 acre parcel having S B L number 078.05-1-84, located in an R3 single-family residential district under section 225-11 of the code of the town of Webster.
Second.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mrs. Fola?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
You have your variance, congratulations.
Thank you.
Just a couple of conditions, uh, you, you need to pick up a permit to build an apartment, and you have one year to start meaningful construction on the project. Yeah. Yeah. Have a good night.
Next one?
1219 Creekside Trail, Karen?
1219 Creekside Trail Edition, located at 1219 Creekside Trail, applicants Lyle and Judy Beach are requesting an area variance to allow a 13-foot side setback where 20 feet is required, associated with the construction of a 570-square-foot addition on a .67 acre parcel having S B L number 065.05-1-39, located in an R1 single-family residential district under section 225-9 of the code of the town of Webster.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just state your name for the record.
Uh, Lyle Beach, here regarding 1219 Creekside Trail, my wife Judy.
Paul's project.
Thanks for the opportunity to present our request here. Uh, Judy and I have lived at 1219 Creekside Trail since 1984, um, our family is all in Webster, our three children, and one of our children lives in the neighborhood and our eight grandchildren, so our intention is to be able to stay in our house and age in place. Um, in, in planning for that, we really want to have a first-floor bedroom and, and a first-floor laundry room, and so we designed a master suite, um, coming off really what we think is the only logical place on the house to, to, um, make the attachment, and we've been sort of planning this and walking through it since August, we had fully intended to stay within the, what we thought was the 15-foot variance that was, uh, or size. And we've been sort of planning this and walking through it since August. We had fully intended to stay within the, what we thought was the fifteen-foot variance that was, or sides. All right, so, long story short, we went through the entire summer planning, worked with an architect drawing the plans and intending to stay within this, what we thought was the fifteen-foot setback, side setback. When we, when I plotted it out on the survey map and getting ready for the building permit, I realized that our lot line tilted a little bit and it came into about thirteen feet. So I called the town and said, geez, I'm worried about this. Wanted to make sure that I was gonna have a trouble. And then I found out that we're actually in a twenty-foot, in our one zone, that required a twenty-foot side setback. So we were off from the get-go. But we, we think it stays in character with the neighborhood. We think it still gives a significant area of side setback and a significant distance from the house on the east, our neighbor. It's really the only logical place to put it on the house that gives us easy access to the rest of the house, that allows us to have a full basement, and that allows for easy connection to the utilities. And so I guess for those reasons, I would like to request you consider the variance.
I have a map here. It says Monro County Interactive Parcel Map.
Yes.
Is that accurate?
I believe it. We tested a number of those measurements in the field where we could actually knew where the lot lines were. And it certainly is accurate for our neighborhood or for our house. And our neighbor's house is on East Joining Side. And visually, it looks to be accurate for the ones that we've marked.
According to this, none of these houses comply.
A fair number do.
I'm not sure that's, this is not an instrument survey map. This is, no.
Just to give you an idea of what's the
Perspective. So I guess what this map is showing is that most of these houses are not twenty feet from the side line.
Correct. And just sort of, I was doing that mainly in regards that it's not out of character with the neighborhood, how other houses seem to be positioned on the lots.
You know, I looked at the zoning map, and it's kind of interesting how it's R-three, R-two, and then R-one dips down into this neighborhood and then goes back up. I'm not, I'm not sure, but, you know.
Yeah, that's
Who knows what they did, you know, when they drew the lines on that?
I have no idea.
Did you notice the same thing?
Yeah, yeah, it's kind of. And looking at the site. There's, there's really nothing else to do here. You're gonna have to move the air conditioner unit, but that's not a big deal in the grand scheme of things. There's no other place to tie into the house because you've got the garage on the other side. So it, it, it's, it's logical. The twenty-foot, I don't understand. The thirteen-foot certainly isn't large.
There's still a lot of room to neighboring property. I'll bet, I'll bet there's still twenty-four, twenty-five feet between the houses easily.
Right, because that house is actually loaded away.
Only thirty-five feet.
Yeah.
Right, right.
So, yeah, I, at first I was skeptical, but after I looked at it, it wasn't so bad.
That's a lot of the location that you proposed. It does shift a lot of the internal traffic flow within the house that governs where it's going to be located also, so.
It's on the bedroom quiet end of the house. The other end is the family room, louder end of the house. It makes sense to put a master bedroom on the quiet end of the house.
Second floor of the room.
Yep, yeah. Well, this meeting's open to the public. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Our number is eight seven two seven zero one one. And while we're waiting, I'll go do the secret here. Pursuant to section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type-two secret.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I like that aging in place thing.
Yes, that's, we're hoping it works.
Yeah, well, you wanna, you know, the house you raised your kids in, you wanna stay there as long as you can.
Yeah, the kids are in the neighborhood, the grandkids are in the neighborhood. So that's, you know, certainly obviously very attractive for us. And you plan for other things, so we might as well plan for, I'm actually not getting older, but Judy has been, so. She'll hit ya.
You're in big trouble now, big trouble.
You haven't changed a bit, Lo.
I don't think anyone's gonna call in, so I'm gonna close the public portion.
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
One of the things I noticed with this addition is that it's located on the garage side of the house at twelve twenty-seven, which is the neighbor that will be impacted by it.
True.
And the garage side of the house is the least impactful to the other neighbor. There, it's, you know, they do have a little addition off the back of the garage where there's a window, but it's, it's not like your living space is gonna be looking into this addition, so it's.
When I, when I visited the site, Mr. Beach, you said you had a letter from the neighbor?
I thought you said he was gonna submit an email. Did he, Josh?
Did we get anything from Josh? No, Josh?
Diana? No? Okay. Well, he intended to. I know he's very supportive of it.
All right, yeah. It's just that there was a letter I wanted to put in the record, that's all.
Yep.
Someone like you went through the standards?
The request is not out of character with the neighborhood. As we look at the Monro County Interactive Parcel Map, many of the parcels, many of the residences in this particular neighborhood are actually closer than the required twenty-foot side setback already, prior to any additions. There will be no detriment created to nearby properties. As I had noted, this addition is going to be located nearest to the garage of the neighbor, which is not the living section of their house, so it should not be of any detriment to them, of the nearest neighbor. Not achievable by any other method. It's really the only logical location to put the addition. The other location where it would fit would be out of the back of the garage, but then it is separated from the living section of the house. This way, it comes off of the bedroom side of the house, and it's, it's really the only logical spot. The request is not substantial. It's only seven feet out of a twenty-foot setback difference. And based on the separation of homes between twelve nineteen and twelve twenty-seven, there still will be a significant distance between the two buildings of the two residences. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts to the side or to the neighborhood. In this case, I'm gonna say the difficulty is not self-created and that the house was placed where it is. It's not an oversized addition by any stretch of the imagination, and it's really the only logical place for this addition to be located. Feel free to add.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Yep.
If no one has any other additions, I will make a motion to grant an area variance for twelve nineteen Creekside Trail for the applicants Lyle and Judy Beach to allow a thirteen-foot side setback where twenty feet is required for the construction of a five-hundred-seventy-square-foot addition that would be located on the east side of the house, the northeast side of the home?
Southeast.
Southeast?
Southeast.
There is no north on this survey. On the southeast side of the home. So that, I lost my place. Five-seventy-square-foot addition and then point-six-nine, like six-seven-eight parcel SBL number zero six five point zero five dash one dash three nine, and conditioned with all the appropriate permits.
Should we reference the plan?
Um, actually, yes.
Well, because it's just that corner that's thirteen feet from the line.
Well, it's true. It is just to a point.
To a point, yeah.
Can we include the elevation plans and the master floor plan with the record to show where the location is?
Architectural plan submitted? Should we? There's no plan number or anything to speak of?
No, they're dated, ten twenty-eight, twenty twenty.
Okay.
Actually, these are not architecturals, but.
Schematics, sketches, sketches.
Sketches, yeah. I'll second that motion.
Mrs. Folo?
Aye.
Mr. Barone?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Mr. Hauser?
Aye.
You have your variance. You can age in place now.
Thank you very much.
You got, the variance is good. Meaningful construction has to start with them one year. You need to build an improvement.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
The last item on the agenda, Forty Commons Boulevard Veterinary Office.
Okay, Forty Commons Boulevard Veterinary Office located at Forty Commons Boulevard. Applicant Andrea Blitz is requesting an area variance to allow a thirty-eight-foot front setback where fifty feet is required associated with the construction of a six-thousand-square-foot veterinary office on a one-point-four-four acre parcel having SBL number zero seven nine point one six dash one dash two four point two-three-two located in an MC medium-intensity commercial district under section two-two-five dash seventeen of the Code of the Town of Webster.
Good evening. Could you state your name for the record, please?
Good evening. I'm David Cox with Pastoral Associates. I'm the civil engineer for the project. And also with me is Andrea Blitz, the owner of The Village Vet. So I could start it. So The Village Vet has been a very successful veterinary hospital. They've been experiencing more, more people, and especially during COVID, more people are getting pets. So her business is actually booming and growing during, over the last year. But her current space right on Ridge Road, just, there's no room for growth. There, there's just, there's not enough parking, and she can't make the building any bigger. So she went looking for additional property, and she really wanted to stay in Webster. She loves, she loves working here, and she's been, you know, just been a really great asset to the community, serving lots of, lots of people in the community with her veterinary services. So she wants to stay here. So the project she found was in Webster Commons area. And Webster Commons had one last piece of developable land. As we can see, it's right here in the bottom corner, that that will complete that final puzzle piece to that project. So that'd be really nice to have that one remaining vacant land kind of built out, planning. So just really talk quickly about the site plan. So we're gonna have kind of a building and a build of the property. And then sort of north, this is where we have a copilot parking. And then to the south here, that's for staff parking down there. So it is a little bit of a unique lot. The existing stormwater management for the property, for the whole development, actually, is on this property. So that takes up a large portion of the property. Pretty much the whole rear of the property is that stormwater management area. And that is what is kind of pushing that building closer to the front of the property. And that's the reason that we're here for the front setback variance. If the pond wasn't there, we could push the building back. But we're literally, we have the building right, right there at the, close to the top of the bank of that existing stormwater management area. And we also brought some three-D elevation of what the building's gonna look like. So it's a, it's a very nice-looking building. It's gonna fit in great with the character. It has a lot of architectural elements to really, really fit in nicely. We were, did come before the planning board last week. They had favorable things to say about it. They were in favor of it. They liked how the building looked. They thought we did a really good job with that. And they were looking forward to having this last, last piece of property fully developed here. And as far as fitting in character with the neighborhood as far as the variance, the building directly to the north is less than fifteen feet setback off the, off here. So we're actually setback more than double of that existing building to the north here. So it's not out of character with the neighborhood at all. And I can answer any questions you have.
Josh, did you get the letter from Tony Kashani? Do you have it with you? I should have brought, I will, could you, yeah, could you read that into the record? Because that, that indicates that the planning board is in favor. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a letter from the chairman of the planning board, Anthony Kashani, to the chairman of the zoning board. At the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the planning board of the Town of Webster heard the following application on Forty Commons Boulevard Village Vet. The planning board would be in favor of a variance being granted for proposed building at Forty Commons Boulevard, The Village Vet. By granting the variance, it would allow for future expansion to the rear and not infringe on the detention pond area. Sincerely, Tony Kashani.
All right, thank you. We'll make that, that record, that letter be part of the record, of course. I drove by there, and there's that, is it Mavis Tire?
Yeah.
They're awful close. I mean, we, we did grant variances there to Mavis Tire when it went in there. This, this lot unfortunately has the stormwater management structure on it.
Right.
Which pushes the building. If that wasn't there, you'd have no problem with setbacks. But of course, you know, that's, that stormwater management structure is very important. You can't, you can't modify it. The variances they're asking for, it's driving to that commercial development. It's internal to the development.
Exactly.
It's not like fronting on Ridge Road, and they're asking to go closer to Ridge Road. It's just closer to the driveway and inside the development.
Correct.
It has minimal impact. I think, I think they did a great job, actually, in laying it out. And also, they thought ahead and showed possible expansion to the building. Also, land bank parking. Was parking one of the?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Now, Josh, the parking's based on the square footage of the building? Correct. How many dogs drive their car to the vet's office? I don't wanna park there overnight.
None, because none of them like going to a vet.
Jenny loves going to a vet.
Think that's bad. You should see our cat.
Dogs, cats, yeah.
Full disclosure, they are our vet, so.
I think, I think that the zoning code is written with referencing square footages of buildings is a function of how many parking spaces you need. And we've run into this with all the fast foods, where they need, only need a hundred parking spots, but seventy-five percent of the businesses through the drive-throughs, they don't need those parking spots. So I think each business owner knows best, within reason. You know, of course, we have the last word. But each business owner knows best how many cars are in their parking lot at any one time. And I think that's, I think that's important to know. I mean, how many people, how many patients are seen at one time? How many, how many pets are brought in at one time?
So generally, we run every fifteen minutes.
Oh, excuse me. Could you step up and use the microphone, please? Otherwise, we won't be able to record what you're saying.
So generally, our appointments run every fifteen minutes, and there's usually three pets every fifteen minutes. If we get behind, you know, that could be six pets parked in the park, six owners parked in the parking lot at once.
So it might be six or seven cars plus the staff?
Plus the staff, yeah. Correct.
But that, you know, there's a lot of parking spots here.
We also, with the bigger building, there is an ability for us to bring in another doctor and some more staff as well. So that will also lend itself to need for more parking than what we currently have right now at our current building.
So is the current parking spaces just for this size building? Or does that also take into consideration the potential of the addition?
So the land bank parking that we have shown takes into account the future addition.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Well, this meeting's open to the public. Any wish, anyone wishing to speak for or against this application? Our number is eight seven two seven zero one one. Do we have any write-ins, Josh? No, okay.
With respect to the setback for this particular building, we had similar situations with the Mavis property right next door. That was actually one lot that, where Mavis is, and this was actually one lot, and then it was divided in half. And then it was divided in half when Mavis bought that property. And then having the property line go down the middle of the road meant that the setbacks were all buggered up for anybody that wanted to put anything in there, the technical term, buggered up.
You know, even with those, even with the variances, I've driven into that area several times. It's never, it's never jammed with traffic or anything. I mean, it's, it's very low, it's a low-volume commercial development, so.
And the most, the most traffic is the goodwill drive-through area. It's, it's never, it's never congested or appears to be over-traveled. That's.
Even at the entrances and exits, there's very, very, there's never a backup that I've seen. I don't think anyone's going to call in, so I'm going to close the public portion immediately, bring it back to the board. You know, we, we've granted variances to other properties in this project. And I, I like to actually go back to things we grant variances on and look at them later to see if we did good. Generally, we do.
Excuse me.
Not always, but generally, we do, we do our job, our due diligence. And this particular project, with the variances, we, there's been no detriment whatsoever. There's no traffic issues, there's, you know, no problem. And actually, it's a nice-looking little development. You got a really attractive-looking building too. I like that. The stormwater management pushes the, the building forward, but that's not your fault. That's, that's just the way it has to be. You've banked land for future parking, just in case it's necessary. Which is a great feature to have. Anybody have a, well, each party just went right through the standards. And I just, I like. Okay, standards. This request is not out of character with the neighborhood. It is not. The building actually is, you know, similar setbacks to some of the other buildings we've, we've seen go up there. There's no detriment created nearby properties. There is not. It's a low-traffic, low-traffic generating business. As the applicant said, there's six or seven cars in the parking lot at a time, plus the employees. The benefit is not achievable by any other method. Actually, I thought they did a great job utilizing the space. I see landscaping. They have the stormwater management area to the rear. They land-banked additional for additional parking spaces, so I think they did a great job with that. The request is not substantial relative to the other variances that we granted in that particular development. There are no adverse physical or environmental impacts with the neighborhood. Actually, I think it's a very attractive building they propose, so it'll be a benefit. Difficulty is not self-created. The applicant wants to stay in Webster. We want us here to stay in Webster. It's not an undesirable change. Again, it's an attractive development, development, building, landscaping, everything about it's attractive. It's not significant. So anybody have anything to add? Okay, pursuant to section six seventeen of the environmental code, I'll make a motion for a type-two seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I'll make a motion to grant an area variance or area variances for a building located at Forty Commons Boulevard. Applicant Andrea Blitz is requiring an area variance to allow, is requesting an area variance to allow a thirty-eight-foot front setback. So we're going with a thirty-eight-foot front setback where fifty feet is required associated with the reconstruction of a six thousand square-foot veterinary office on a one-point-four-four acre parcel having SPL number zero seven nine point one six dash one dash twenty-four point two three two located in MC medium-intensity commercial district under section two twenty-five dash seventeen of the code of the town of Webster.
Second. Mr. Barone.
Aye.
Mrs. Bola.
Aye.
Mr. Snyder.
Aye.
Mr. Hauser.
Aye.
Okay, just a couple of conditions. The, the variance is good for one year. You have to start meaningful construction within a year. And you need to get all necessary building permits, sorry.
And the final approval from the planning board.
And, yeah, you got to go back to the planning board for the final, their final approval. All right. Congratulations. Good luck to the project. Have a good night. So that concludes the meeting for tonight. Everybody have a great night and we will see you, let me see, when's the next one? March? No.
February.
Oh, yours going back too fast, all right. February ninth. Have a great night.